Good morning. Today is Tuesday, twentieth of June. Uh, time is ten o'clock. Uh, the board is in session for its, uh, to conduct its weekly open business meeting. Commissioner Daley and myself are here. I'm assuming Commissioner Davidson will be here shortly. If we could have everyone identify yourself for the record, starting over here.
Noah Hill for Caring.
Okay.
Alex Murray, Aida County Operations.
Deborah Phillips, Ada County Operations.
Josh Brown, Operations.
Bofying Operations.
Don Bridge, Works Office.
Kathleen Graves, Auditor's Office.
Mary Parsons, Pinka Posada.
Lee Parsons.
Haley Minder, thirty-one hundred Sellers.
Lindsay Wheeler, Recorder's Office.
Victoria Bailey, Recorder's Office.
Bonnie Albertelli, Recorder's Office.
Heather Lee, Their Reporter's Office.
I T guy.
Lorna Georgis, Prosecutor's Office.
Ethan Boardian with the Clerk's Office.
Brad Smith, Assessor.
Beth Montrager.
Well, thank you. Uh, Madam Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, there are not.
Okay, welcome to our meeting, Commissioner. First, we'll take up unfinished business. Uh, uh, I'll accept a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to remove the unfinished business from the table for consideration.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the values and teams reviewed the bids received for bid two-three-zero-five-nine. If you would like to submit this recommendation or a letter for your consideration, I can read it into the record if you would.
Please read it in the record, yes.
To the Board of Ada County Commissioners from Ada County Procurement regarding bid two-three-zero-five-nine Expo Idaho Digital Reader Board's Replacement. Dear members of the board, after viewing the bids submitted, is the recommendation of the evaluation group to award the contract for bid two-three-zero-five-nine to Yescow as the lowest responsive bidder in the amount of one-hundred-sixty-two-thousand-six-hundred-sixty-two dollars.
Okay, any questions or discussion? Okay, if not, I will accept a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to accept the recommendation of the Evaluation Committee and award bid twenty-three-zero-five-nine Expo Idaho Digital Reader Board replacement to Yescow in the amount of one-hundred-and-sixty-two-thousand-six-hundred-and-sixty-two.
Second. Okay, you've heard the, uh, the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, next we'll take up, uh, new business. We have a couple of resolutions. And so, we'll need to, uh, open the public hearing on resolution number two-eight-seven-four. A resolution for the destruction of records. Okay, is there any, anybody here who has to testify? Hearing none. I'll close the public hearing on resolution two-eight-seven-four. Ask for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve resolution number two-eight-seven-four as listed on the agenda.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. I'll open the public hearing on resolution two-eight-seven-five, ARPA Resolution Number Thirty for the Approval of allowable expenditures related to the American Rescue Plan Act Fund Budget. Do we have any discussion or any, uh, explanation?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, hi. Hi, Ada. Um, we are happily closing out for ARPA projects and returning funds on three projects, two which are closing and one which they have decided they will not be utilizing the funds. Um, so we will return two million nine-hundred-ninety-eight thousand three-hundred-and-twenty-four dollars to grant to be distributed, so.
Okay. Well, good enough. Is there any other discussion? If not, I'll close the public hearing on, uh, resolution two-eight-seven-five. I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve resolution number two-eight-seven-five as listed on the agenda.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, moving on, we have procurement. Uh, review of proposals received and award recommendations for goods and services, RFP two-three-zero-five-three.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the valuation team for RFP two-three-zero-five-three has completed the evaluation of the four proposals submitted for this project. Would like to submit this award recommendation letter for your consideration. Read it in the record.
Please.
To the Board of Ada County Commissioners from Ada County Procurement regarding RFP two-three-zero-five-three. Ada County Court Hearing Participant Notification System Services. Dear members of the board, the Evaluation Committee has evaluated the responses for RFP two-three-zero-five-three. A final ranking of qualified candidates is determined by evaluation scoring. The final rankings in order of evaluation scoring is as follows. Number one, One Support with an eighty-one point three-three. Aplivity LLC fifty-three point eight-five. E Court Date with a fifty point nine-two. Catalyst Courts Land Records with a forty-six point oh-oh, and Mobile Texterx was non-responsive. It is the recommendation of the Evaluation Group to award the contract for RFP two-three-zero-five-three to One Support as the number one ranked proposer.
Okay, any questions or discussion? If not, I'll accept a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to accept the Evaluation Committee's recommendation, approve the final rankings for RFP twenty-three-zero-five-three Ada County Court Hearing Participant Notification System Services and award it to One Support.
What's the dollar on? Oh, it's not a dollar. Got it on, I don't. All right, is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, we have review of bids and award recommendations for Public Works Project, uh, RFP two-three-zero-five-four and two-three-zero-six-zero.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Ada County Commissioners receive four responses for bid two-three-zero-five-four. Would like to submit this letter of bids recommendation for your consideration.
Okay, you can read the letter.
To the Board of Ada County Commissioners from Ada County Procurement regarding bid two-three-zero-five-four Barber Park Maintenance Yard Paving. Dear members of the board, Ada County Commissioners receive four responses for bid two-three-zero-five-four, and the following are the names of the bidders and the bid amounts submitted. Bidder number one, Riot Con Incorporated, fifty-three thousand dollars. Impact General Contractor with a hundred-and-forty-seven thousand dollars. Paul Construction Inc. with a hundred-and-twenty-two thousand two-hundred-and-fifty-eight dollars. Titan Excavation and Construction Incorporated with forty-nine thousand eight-hundred, forty-nine dollars and seventy-one cents. After viewing the bids submitted, is the recommendation of the Evaluation Group to award the contract for bid two-three-zero-five-four to Titan Excavation and Construction Incorporated as the lowest responsive bidder in the amount of forty-nine thousand eight-hundred, forty-nine dollars and seventy-one cents.
Thank you. Is there, uh, any questions or discussions? If not, I'll accept a motion.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I move to accept the recommendation of the Evaluation Committee and award bid two-three-zero-five-four, uh, Barber Park Maintenance Yard Paving to, uh, Titan Excavation in the amount of forty-nine thousand eight-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars and seventy-eight cents.
Seventy-one.
Seventy-one cents.
I second the motion.
Okay, any further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, bid number two-three-zero-six-zero.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Ada County Commissioners receive two responses for bid two-three-zero-six-zero. Would like to submit this letter for your recommendation.
Okay, you can read, you can read it for the record?
To the Board of Ada County Commissioners from Ada County Procurement for bid two-three-zero-six-zero Ada County Juvenile Services Gym Ceiling Improvements. Dear members of the board, Ada County Commissioners receive two responses for bid two-three-zero-six-zero, and the following are the names of the bidders and the bids amounts submitted. Beal Corporation with ninety-four thousand eight-hundred-and-seventy dollars and Radix Construction with eighty-two thousand three-hundred-and-ninety-nine dollars. After viewing the bids submitted, is the recommendation of the Evaluation Group to award the contract for bid two-three-zero-six-zero to Radix Construction Incorporated as the lowest responsive bidder in the amount of eighty-two thousand three-hundred-and-ninety-nine dollars.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or questions? Hearing none, I'll accept a bid, a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to accept the recommendation of the Evaluation Committee and award bid twenty-three-zero-six-zero Ada County Juvenile Services Gym Ceiling Improvements to Radix Construction in the amount of eighty-two thousand three-hundred-and-ninety-nine dollars.
I'll second that.
You've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Now, we're, uh, next up, we're in opening of, uh, RFP two-three-zero-two-six. Ada County Landfill Diversion Services for Fibrous Materials.
Awesome. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Ada County Commissioners receive two proposals for RFP two-three-zero-six-two. Our bonfire equipment system is queued up on the screen, and when you're ready, we will open it.
It's not having trouble connecting to the live X key. It just kicked me out.
Just kicked you off. Try and rejoin.
It's the Wi-Fi.
Can I read the name? What's that? Laura Noah.
Here we go. Okay. All right.
So if you're ready, keep on sealing those.
We're ready.
We just need the name of the proposals today, Mr. Chairman, which is Timber Creek Recycling and Tree Top Recycling Incorporated. Uh, with that, we'll need some time to evaluate, and we request that the bid be tabled for final ranking and award recommendation to the July eleventh Open Business Meeting.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll move to table the final rankings and award, and award recommendations of RFP two-three-zero-two-six. Ada County Landfill Diversion Services for Fibrous Materials Processing to July eleventh. July eleventh, twenty-twenty-three.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, we have the opening of RFP two-three-zero-five-zero Ada County Landfill Diversion Services for Concrete and Rubble Processing.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Ada County Commissioners receive three proposals for RFP two-three-zero-five.
Zero?
And Noah should have them pulled up here, and when he's ready, he can unseal it for you.
Okay.
And again, on this one, it'll just be the name of the proposals. That looks like we have Premier Aggregates, Taylor Morgan Incorporated, and Timber Creek Recycling. So, Mr. Chairman, the evaluation team will need time to evaluate these proposals as well. We request that this be tabled for final rankings and award recommendation to the July eleventh OBM as well.
July eleventh. Okay, thank you. I'll accept a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to table the final rankings and award recommendation for RFP twenty-three-zero-five-zero Ada County Landfill Diversion Services for Concrete and Rubble Processing to July eleventh, twenty-twenty-three.
I'll second that. You've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, we have change order. ARPA Expo Idaho Horse Stables Removal for Protection of Boise River. Agreement number one-four-five-three-nine. We're going to decrease the amount. Are there any queries?
It's completed.
Yeah, it's completed. Have they done some higher seating? Is that what?
It's, I'm really happy with the weather's been cool up and raining, so might have to nip out there and have a peek to see.
Yeah, all right, well, good. Well, uh, thank you. Uh, I'll accept a motion to accept the change order.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve change order number one. ARPA Expo Idaho Horse Stables Removal for Protection of the Boise River as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, now we have, uh, licenses. New license, license transfer, and license renewal. We'll take up the catering permits first.
Well, Mr. Chair, I'll, uh, move to approve the, um, six catering permits as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, we have new licenses. Um, uh, thirty-one hundred Sellers, uh, Matty's Wine and Whiskey, Nara Ramen and Sushi Bar. I'm gonna ask Heather if she has anything you want to tell us for the, for the thirty-one hundred Sellers. This isn't a public hearing, but we're asking for information.
Sure, so, um, I did bring the full application as well in case there are any additional questions. Um, thirty-one hundred Sellers is located in unincorporated Ada County, which means that as part of the licensing process, they did have to reach out to neighbors within a one-thousand-foot radius um, to obtain signatures for either consent. Uh, different to how we previously had done this, they had also reached out to just any neighbors, uh, regardless of consent or denial within that thousand-foot radius, so we do have signatures of non-consenting to the license being issued as well as consenting, um, which is different than previously that we've had um, after a lot of discussion that we've had over the last couple of years. Um, unfortunately, thirty-one hundred Sellers did not reach the seventy-five percent of signatures. However, there is a part of ordinance that does allow the board to review the application though um, and determine, you know, if there was a good faith made and whether or not to still issue the license, which is why it is on the agenda for your consideration.
Okay, and, uh, along with that, that application, there's been a, a, the sheriff has done some, an investigation like they normally do?
Yes, sir. So, there is, with any license that is, application that is submitted, uh, there is a review done by the Sheriff's Office. Uh, Sheriff's Office has given a positive assessment um, and does not see any, um, outstanding factors. Uh, some of those could be previous criminal history of the, the applicant or anything like that, and they have not found anything to prohibit uh, the issuance of an alcohol license. Um, again, with this being unincorporated area, it is strictly for a beer and wine type of license. It is not for hard liquor. Uh, the particular application only is applying for wine, and they are a winery.
Right. Okay, is there any questions? So, the clerk's, uh, recommending approval.
We are stating that the paperwork is in line and, and everything is presented to the Commissioners for review.
Okay, well, it's up for discussion. What do we say?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
So, question to staff, um, under our process or policies here, what, um, what are the grounds that the board can approve this irrespective of the, meeting the signature requirement?
Well, we did try to, um, adjust ordinance, uh, prior to Phil leaving office, and unfortunately, some of those clarification points that we were trying to pass for that did not make it through. Um, so it is open to interpretation at this point. Um, if you feel that there has been a good faith effort made, they have gone through a planning and zoning hearing already in which they were zoned accordingly, and they have already received their state license. So, it is truly up to the Commissioners to, to make that decision at this point. Um, from the Clerk's office, we are taking a neutral stance on it and just stating that the paperwork is in line.
Okay. Any other discussion? Is anyone from thirty-one hundred Sellers here? You are. Okay. All right. Of course, this is not a, this is not a public hearing, so we're not asking you to testify, but, but, uh, I'm assuming you're, uh, you're in favor of this.
And I, um, if you'd allow me, I just want to remind, our conditional use permit does limit us to only ten people per day on our property or up to thirty people on a weekend day. Uh, we're not allowed to have tastings unlimited, so that's one of the reasons why we decided without seventy-five percent of our neighbors' approval to still proceed with our application in hopes that you guys can see that we're limited.
Cause it is limited, cause we limited it when, 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 uh, he opened up, it was a small amount. Okay, is there any, any further discussion?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I'll just ask, I looked over your, uh, your s- uh, signatures there. There looked to be several, I don't know, about a third that you just couldn't get a hold of. Um, can you talk about, you know, what efforts you did to try to track down the other property owners in the thousand-foot radius?
Um, yes, we, so we received, uh, uh, the, like, the list comes from, through the Clerk's office, but from the, um, Development Services Office. Um, so we've sent out, uh, letters trying to keep our neighbors within a thousand feet um, aware of anything that's happening on the property in terms of, uh, the road that was required, being put in, that kind of thing. And then following up with the letter explaining, again, the seventy-five percent rule and asking for their consent and returning the letters. Um, we received about, I, I think, uh, about seventy-five percent of them returned letters. The BLM is one of those people, um, which we did not, uh, uh, we didn't assume we would hear back from. We did not. I think, again, it was probably the Clerk's office there taking a neutral stance.
We, we also don't count that in as a part of the seventy-five percent when it's the federal-owned or state-owned land. Um, just because they will not give you back any type of yea or nay on that. Um, and that is something that we have carried through with previous applications as well as not owning in the BLM-owned properties.
Okay. Any other questions from the, uh, from the board?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Just curious if there's anyone here who is opposing this license or if we received any public comment.
Uh, let me clear it.
I have received feedback. Um, I did call every, uh, person who submitted with the application a yea or nay for the license. Um, so I did call just to confirm that, yes, they did in fact sign and that they are still either consenting or non-consenting to it. Um, and did receive some public comment. Uh, few were concerned with the um, ability to transfer the license should the property no longer be owned by the menders. Um, to which I, I let them know that with this change in state law, I'm not quite sure how transfers are going to work post-July first. Um, but I did try to answer their questions as best as possible. Um, others were, uh, just vocal in the same sense that they were at some of the public hearings. Um, but overall, they, they all were very respectful and just said that they either stick by what they had stated on the signatures.
Well, it seems to me that, uh, this board did authorize a conditional use permit with certain conditions, and this being, is it one of the last conditions, or do you have your conditional use permit?
Um, I, I don't believe in the conditions it's required to have an alcohol license.
It's required to have an alcohol license to serve, to do the tastings.
Correct.
So, it's sort of implied, I guess. Right.
Right.
Okay, well, is there any other discussion? And is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the licenses, uh, as listed, the three new licenses as listed on the agenda. Uh, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Okay, is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor?
Discussion?
Is there discussion?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I'm gonna plant a vote aye on this. It seems to be just a general, um, good cause. Uh, the Court's office said that, uh, it's up to the Commissioners discretion. Um, I think they put some effort into getting the signatures. Their, the events that they're contemplating are, are pretty small, um, is what it sounds like, and so, uh, impact to the surrounding area is pretty minimal, and I think that's why we granted the conditional use permit in the first place, so. Um, I, I think they've done their due diligence. I think the, the board does have discretion to grant this, uh, for good cause shown. I, I see good cause. I don't see any evidence in front of us to support rejecting it, so I intend, intend to vote aye.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we, uh, next up, license transfer.
Well, Mr. Chair, I will, uh, move to approve the two license transfers. Um, and I'll include the one license renewal and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. All right, while we're on the clerk's, uh, uh, business, we'll, we have, uh, with us a representative of the clerk.
Morning, sir. Quick update. I think most of this room is affiliated in some form or fashion, and we kicked off week one of budget presentations. This week will kick off deliberations. Church is preparing for that as we speak. Uh, we're also really excited with our ERP system rollout for the financial system. We start a three-week systems integration testing. They kick off, uh, about an hour ago, so knock on wood. That initial testing will go great, and we'll still keep aiming towards that October go-live, so plenty going on.
When is scheduled for our next update?
Budget update?
No.
No, the?
Systems upgrade. If there's not one schedule, I'll, I'll look into that.
All right. Okay. All right, well, thank you then. Anything else?
No, sir.
Okay. Okay, we have claims journal. I'll accept a motion on the claims journal.
I move to authorize payment of the claims on the claims journal dated Jan, uh, June sixteen, twenty-twenty-three.
Second. Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have personnel actions. Too miscellaneous.
I move to approve the personnel actions as listed on the agenda, and that summary sheet remain on file in the Commissioners' office.
I second the motion.
You've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, we have the commiss, the assessor's office. We don't have the assessor here, but the assessor's office is there.
Right. And morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Have some great news on the number of appeals. At this point, we're only at eighty-five. Uh, last year at this point, we would have two-hundred-and-ninety. Um, based on a five-year rolling average, we would be at one-fifty-nine, and based on the last twenty years, we'd be at two-fifty-two. So, I mean, we're less than half, even maybe a quarter of what we typically are.
What's the deadline?
So, uh, that's coming up next Monday, I believe, the twenty, uh, I haven't checked this. I think that twenty-fifth is it? So, twenty-six.
Why ask you?
Yeah. Luckily, I got my calendar here.
Yeah.
So, it's coming up pretty quick, and, uh, the only big difference this year is we're seeing more commercial properties, obviously, with commercial going up and residential going down. Uh, typically, we're about ten percent of our appeals are commercial. This year, we're seeing a little less than half, so, yep, yep.
So, your commercial appraiser, are you getting geared up?
Yeah, they're getting hit pretty hard, so.
So, they can, uh, have they started negotiating with the ones that have, that have, uh, applied?
Of course, yeah, so they jump on the phone instantly and start working with the property owners and, uh, try to, and we have, you know, they have a lot more time too right now, so they're ready to pick it out, and so, do the best they can to keep B U to a minimum.
I was just gonna ask the, about the ca, the calls, are the calls being productive?
Yeah, there's only, I went back there and talked to the appraisers, there's only a few of them that have really kind of high volume. Cause we do have some pockets of values that actually went up on residential, but the rest of them- Cause we do have some pockets of values that actually went up on residential, but the rest of them, I mean, they're pretty slow. Um.
We had an appeals uh angry because their volumes went down.
We have had some of those. Yeah, the appraisers come to me like, how do I deal with this? Yeah, something we don't typically experience, so. But overall, it's going great.
Good, good, now I guess we have some tax cancellations.
Yes.
Okay. Uh.
Let's see, Emerald Station Owners Association.
Yeah, so that's two parcels, and you can see there go through all three uh years. And that's basically just a small strip right next to their medical facility. And it's a, we put a token value on it of a couple thousand dollars, and it's basically just the sidewalk that goes through next to their property. So it's a common area, so we're putting it back to zero value. So it's a pretty minimal impact, but it's a common area.
Okay. Anything else? Property roll, what do you do with those? Tax cancellations, all of them?
Yep, these are all property rolls, the.
Tax cancellations, all right. Well, there's no motion.
Mr. Chairman, I approve, I moved. I move to approve the tax cancellations and listed on the agenda, which includes four tax cancellations for twenty twenty. Five tax cancellations for twenty twenty one. And fourteen tax cancellations for twenty twenty two, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that.
Okay, I might note that these are not truly cancellations, these are just adjustments, but the code calls and cancellations. Cancel a portion of the taxes. Okay, you've heard the motion, all in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Hey, now we have with us our distinguished treasurer, Beth Maugh.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, it's a busy day in the treasurer's office because.
Today's the day.
The day. Um the due date for the second half twenty twenty two property taxes, so. Um just for any property owners out there who have not yet paid, we encourage you to pay, um because tonight we will be. Applying a two percent late charge, which we are required to do by law. I'll also also note that interest does go back to January first. So I again, we encourage people to pay so we can avoid assessing any additional charges.
Okay.
That's it.
Okay, well, thank you. Anything else?
Nope, that's our priority for the next several days.
So the jodder is busy then.
It's very busy, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh we now have uh. Expo Idaho interim uh events and concessionary agreements and commercial exhibitor agreements. Oh, excuse me, oh, that's right, we have minutes, we have minutes of the indigent services and jail inspections. Any discussion or or questions? No, I'll accept a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the minutes as identified in the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second.
Okay. You've heard the motion, all in favor, say aye, aye?
Aye. Okay.
Okay, now we have the Expo Idaho interim events, uh concessionaire agreements. And commercial exhibitor agreements, any questions or discussion? Hearing none, I'll accept a motion.
Well, I move to approve the five interim event agreements, one concessionary agreement. And seven commercial exhibitor agreements as listed on the agenda, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion, all in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next up, we have Parks and Waterways, uh an event center, have three a- agreements. Uh any discussion? If not, I'll accept a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the three Barber Park education and event center agreements as listed on the agenda. And authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second.
Yeah, you've heard the motion, all in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh next up, we have uh. Four agreements. Um I have read through the agreements, find them acceptable, is there any any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll accept a motion.
Uh Mr. Chair, I move to um approve the four agreements as listed on the agenda. And authorize the chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
You've heard the motion, all in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, next up, we have weekly indigent items. I'll accept a motion.
Chairman, I move to accept the recommendations of the indigent service staff as listed on the summary of cases dated June twentieth twenty twenty three. And authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion, all in favor say aye, aye? Motion carries, thank you. Okay, we have operations up Elder Street Project Budget Discussion, I guess we're gonna have to raise that a touch. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
All right, well, come up here and tell us that uh.
Fill us in.
Eight back ways a little more.
That's part of it, sir. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners.
Yeah, sure.
Through our process, uh of, you know, working on the tenant improvement uh for the space and design of it. Uh as well as working on the uh RTU replacement on top of the roof, we've run into some structural concerns out there. Um and so through that assessment of the structural concerns, uh it's been determined that we have to do some additional support loading underneath. Uh to support the beams in the roof and then relocate uh the RTU units. Um spread them out over a a few more of the roof joists, and so there's a lot more that's going into it now, so we have. Uh request for an ARPA component for the RTU side of it up on the roof and then. Uh a request for some additional funding for the uh improvements that need to be done inside, which include additional mechanical work. Rerouting of the fire system now, uh as well as uh some support structure, pure post beams that need to go uh into the the underside of it, so. Unfortunately, we have a safety concern with the facility now, so uh we have to address it before we can do anything, so we do have to move the RTU units. Uh to put them in the proper location so that it's supported appropriately, and then also do the support columns underneath. And the modifications in order to do the tenant improvements inside that space.
Why do they weigh more, I thought technology, they lighten things up a little bit.
Yeah, unfortunately.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, that's a great question, so when we requested the uh ARPA funds, the ARPA language speaks to increasing the. The value of the air, that MERV thirteen, uh when you go to that uh spec of unit, uh units get bigger, right? More space around the filtration system. And they weigh more, so old units back in the day weighed about, uh what was the number, like? Seven, eight hundred pounds, and we're essentially doubling the weight of those units now with these new. Yeah, we were as surprised as you are, that's the same face I made. Um so yes, sir, that that's that's the.
They can't go on the ground?
Yeah, great question. Uh there's sixteen of them, require a lot of space on the ground. Uh I don't think we we give up a lot of parking for that, but.
Sixteen of them.
Sixteen units, that's correct, it's for the entire building, not just for the twenty thousand four hundred.
Joists are we gonna have to, how many beams are we gonna have to put in?
So there's the the support column, I think there's probably fifteen total support columns, so they have to do a a footing, you know, cut the concrete, install a footing. Uh one support post up, most of those will be hidden inside the walls or have a small bump out in the wall. Um and this will also carry through into the part that's unoccupied, so we're gonna take care of everything all at once, so then in our future design, we'll just incorporate those into. Whatever we do, and then they'll have to put in a um kind of a U U bolt beam or U U shaped beam. That will carry the load over some of that span as well. Uh and then, of course, relocating the units, uh the units have to sit over um four of the um roof joists. And so you'll have to put up uh install a uh basically an adapter piece that cover carries that. And then narrow it back down for the actual RTU unit to sit on for the flow of the unit. Um and so all of that takes into that design, um and then they have to be moved into different locations and. We have some details, if you if you'd like to see that, that shows kind of where the units are sitting, where the units were supposed to be sitting, and then where the units have to go. Um the way the the way the units.
What's the difference in where they're supposed to be sitting and where they have to go?
Well, so so the 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 units were supposed to sit in a different location based off of the 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 load for those roof beams.
Yeah.
Uh and so um where originally supposed to be placed and where they're currently placed, um is is not the same, basically, that's how we designed. Uh this was, you know, before our time, of course, and so. Um that derives part of like, we have to move the units either way because we're not even sitting in the proper location of where they should be.
Yeah.
So so what you're looking at is just a rooftop plan of where the existing units sit now. And then the next page, once we got into the structural. Um the structural engineer went back to the old city plans that they had on file or record, and it shows that all the units should have been placed over the existing bathroom areas where they. Um you know, that where they can absorb that structural uh component. We don't know why they got placed where they did, I think it was just for the ease of actually running all the mechanical below.
It's cheaper.
It was cheaper. And so may they made this move without the approval, so once we try to get it approved with new units, there's no way it's gonna get through planning with the structural component. The the locations they're at now, they just, the roof joists, it's not safe technically.
Should this not have been disclosed to us?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, that is the question, right? So we go through due diligence uh when we purchase a building. Uh our due diligence includes a mechanical review, uh we do the uh review to make sure there's no. EPA problems, like was there a gas station or a cleaning, um dry cleaning facility on the property? Uh one thing that's not included um in detail is a structural review of the property, and that's just per our requirements as a county. Uh we've talked about that internally, reviewed it with the attorneys, and we we think that there's value in us. Um moving forward, including a structural review. Uh with the caveat of understanding, we don't always exactly know how we're gonna use the building when we buy it, we don't know what the end of programming is gonna look like. Uh so there will always be that element of the unknown.
Is there not a disclosure requirement from the seller?
Disclosure requirement did not include, and there was a full disclosure, did not include at all any reference to the location of those units and and any deviance from structural.
Well, it seems like they either knew or should have known.
They they may not have been aware. They may not have been aware at all, yeah.
They just sold it.
Say again?
They just sold it.
They just sold it, right, exactly.
After they're owning it for four, five months.
Well, so, yeah.
They may have discovered it.
Right, and they may not have discovered it, and the other, the people that sold it to them may have not disclosed it as well, so it's. It may not have even been something to disclose, eh, you know, the structural element is uh.
Somebody knew that they didn't put the.
The city didn't inspect it, uh.
So there's no answer, that's thirty five years ago, and uh there's no records of of anybody saying anything.
Cause it would have had the.
Because it was in violation since then, it did it, right?
It would have proper support. If it was over the bathrooms, correct?
It it would have proper support, yes, Chairman, um the the challenge, though, is getting the ducting from that location out to all of the other areas, which is. Challenge that we're running into as well in this, and so. Uh more than likely, that's why they moved them to the location currently sitting, because it allowed for them to get the ducting. From the units out to each of the locations uh that was necessary.
All right, well, and uh how much how much more do you need from ARPA and how much more do you need from the Kathleen?
So our request for ARPA is uh three hundred and sixteen thousand and five dollars, uh that should should take care of what's up up top on the roof. Um the lower portion, which includes additional forty eight thousand dollars for design fee, right now, we're sitting at about six hundred and seventy five thousand. Uh so our, and this is, this is all estimates based off where we're currently at. Uh we do need to get into design a little bit more with the engineers so we could finalize it, so our request really is. I believe there's some money sitting in a in a in a account for the purchase of it, we would just ask that that money remain in there so that we can go in. Get a really uh finalized quote for you, come back to you with that firm number, so.
Kathleen could speak more to that.
Well, I'd like to hear that. Yes, yes, she's just nodding her head.
Yes, I agree with everything, so. As you know, this the original six point five that the general fund put in, we were gonna only cover up to the. Amount, the difference between that and the seller property, so seller property, two point three million, some change.
You did get that money, didn't you?
We did, Friday.
Wired to you, Friday.
Wired, it's in the it's in the fund, so we are we're golden there. So now we're ready to move on. Um I would just suggest, instead of moving that dollar amount back, we leave it there, when they get all their contracts in place. And we know what those dollar amounts are, we'll know the amount that we can move back to the general fund. It won't be the two point three million we originally discussed, because we have the roof and this now. Um but we will move something back, so I would just suggest we just leave it as is, let them get their contracts in place. So they know, they know they can't go above the two point three million.
Well.
Or close to it.
Well.
And then we'll move whatever the difference is back, and that gives them the ability to get whatever they need down.
Okay, I'd also like a legal a legal analysis, because I believe I believe that uh that the law states that. If there is a defect, they e- they either knew or should have known, it needs to be disclosed.
And 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 undisclosed, yeah.
It's an undisclosed effect in the in the construction of the property. And I don't know if they knew it or not, but really, they knew it or not, they they uh I'd like a legal analysis of where they should have known.
But, Mr. Chairman, if I can add one more comment. Um to Kathleen's point, we um we rushed our design team to give us a rough order of magnitude to get these budgets. Uh when we understood that the structural was changing, I had kind of pushed them from a ninety five percent drawings completed back down to about seventy five, there's a lot more. Left in that, so once again, this is a rough order of magnitude, we're asking for a lot with the understanding that we didn't wanna exceed that budget. Um so I just wanted to make sure that that was clear and on the record, that this is a rough order of magnitude.
Okay. So you don't need to. Go ahead.
Well, I I think the same question, you, we don't need a motion or anything, now we just need to do what.
We just need to know that that you're good with us, with the plan that we have in place.
As long as you can keep Kathleen happy on that.
Mr. Chair, for my comment, we'll do a resolution.
What's that?
We'll do a formal resolution.
Yeah, on the ARPA, on the indigent ARPA, okay.
Uh uh on the good side of things, there was, I think, about three million dollars returned to ARPA funds, so we're asking for for.
There was a little, there was a little return, no doubt.
There is a little right side, hopefully.
Oh, yeah, okay, all right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Will you initiate the uh the uh legal review?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay. Request the University of Idaho Extension to host a mobile farmers market. I don't know, that'd be kind of controversial, do we have any discussions on that?
Not for me.
All right. So I guess we need a motion then, right, right?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve the request from University of Idaho Extension, Ada County, to host the Boise Mobile Farmers Market.
I second the motion.
Okay. You've heard the motion, all in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Anything else needs to be brought before the board? Not, we're in recess, thank you. Well, good morning, today is uh Tuesday, June the uh twentieth, the time is uh ten forty-five. Uh Flea, uh the Board of Commissioners sitting as the Board of Emergency Medical Services District. Is in session to conduct its weekly open business meeting. All three commissioners are present, we have with us on the bridge, the director, Mr. Sean Ray, and uh. Who's this lady you have sitting over here? What's that? Oh, Kathleen Graves is with us, NIT guy. Ma'am Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, there are not.
No changes to the agenda. I'll accept a motion on the claims journal.
Mr. Chairman, I move to authorize payment of the claims as listed on the claims journal dated June sixteenth twenty twenty-three regarding EMS expenditures.
I'll second that.
Okay, uh you've heard the motion, all in favor say aye. Uh we have personnel actions.
I move to approve the personnel actions as listed on the agenda and that the summary sheet remain on file in the commissioner's office.
I second the motion.
You've heard the motion, all in favor, say aye. And now we get to the best part, our EMS update, and we have Sean on the bridge for us.
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioner, good morning. Uh I have a another meeting at eleven is why I'm on the bridge today, but. Um, pretty quick update, we had a representative of Langsma ride along with us last week. That went really well, I think she learned a lot about how EMS functions. And uh she got to tour the dispatch center in St. Alphonsus, it was a a good time. So, the next ride along, endatively scheduled right now. Is uh Lieutenant Governor Scott Bedkey is gonna do a ride along on July tenth with us, so. We're looking forward to that one coming up also.
Okay. Okay, anything else?
I think that's it for today, sir.
That's it for today, any questions? No questions? Well, is there any other business needs to be brought before the board? Hearing none, we're in recess, thank you, Sean.
Thanks, Sean.
Thank you.